You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Swansea.
Meeting minutes? There was a there instead of a there, but I've forgotten where it was.
Oh, well.
I'll let you know. I make a motion, we approve the special meeting minutes of December 13th.
Second? All in favor?
Aye. Make the motion, we approve the non-public meeting minutes of December 13th.
Second? All in favor?
Aye. Make the motion, we approve the regular meeting minutes of December 20th.
Second.
And the discussion, the Wilson Pond Dam, it said four and a fifth boards and five and a fifth boards, it was a half.
It should be...
Instead of one fifth, it should be one half.
Oh, okay.
There were fives instead of twos.
One half.
In a couple places.
Instead of...
One fifth.
One fifth, okay, I'll look it up.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye. Make the motion, we approve the non-public meeting minutes, one and two, of December 20th.
Second? All in favor?
Aye. Make the motion, we approve the consent agenda?
Second? Anything further, Mike?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Public input.
Mark Slary, Mr. Wilson Pond Dam. Thank you for moving our final board. Took about three, four, or five days at most for that water to go down. I'm sure that water was traveling through that pipe from the 32 with some force. The water is down. I do have one question, and I'm just curious as to if there's a reason why the boards are actually removed off fronts. The boards usually sit in that metal cage, and there's no boards in there. So, they're removed, and I'm not sure what's the reason to do for that. Hopefully, there is a reason, because I think transparency is important here.
Hopefully, he's just doing maintenance on them or something, I don't know.
I'm not sure what they continue on what boards, but just a question.
Yep. They'll ask him.
I also want to thank you for all your work there. Very much.
Looks more normal now for winter, doesn't it?
It does.
Anybody further?
I'll just make one more comment. So, it is, you know, the reason it's important for the water to go down consistently is, you think about it, that water was up for additional two months in the normal process. You know, when these fish and these perles and stuff, they're trying to find a place to burrow themselves, you know, the water's up, and they've already done it, and now it's down, you know, they can be in jeopardy. So, it is important for just to be able to see the process and...
Thank you. Mike Gamarlo?
Aye.
Want to get rid of the stagecoach and some horses, or...
Well, I don't have the horses. I got a stagecoach. Back in 1987, Brown loaned the Town of Swansea their stagecoach. And that, that stagecoach, Tim Brown bought it when he bought the Red Barn Field at top of Christian Hill. And then that barn was the stagecoach that belonged to Ellie Whitcomb. And it sits down in our museum now since 1987. And finally, this last year, I was able to convince NBC that it's time to give it to the Town of Swansea and to the museum at, at Rockfield. And so, I'm here to get the approval of the selectmen tonight to accept the stagecoach that's been there since 87 as a gift from the Brown family in honor of Tim Brown. Here's the signature of NBC signing off. And this is the original, I'm sorry, I should have made a couple of copies of, of the original loan of the stagecoach.
We have a public hearing. And for those who don't know, what is NBC?
Nancy Babs and Cynthia.
No, I don't think it's necessarily, because we don't have, there's no appraised value. Slid was asking if our public hearing was required, since there's no appraised value and it's something in our possession, I think we can just proceed with accepting the donation of property.
Thank you. Please thank NBC.
Thank NBC. They'd like to sign off. And have you sign off.
Thank you.
And if you could make a vote to say that you have accepted it, and then I'll pick that up in the minutes, and I'll return those minutes to NBC, and they'll, they'll thank you.
I'll make the motion with gratitude.
Second? In favor?
Aye.
Aye? At two out of three.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Totally. Just about 35 years I've been trying to do this.
Thank you. Another success story. Thanks, Mike. New business. Fire chief job posted. Looked good.
Very good. Proceed with getting that posted, then, and soliciting letters of interest for the screening panel.
I like your idea of five to seven.
Yes. We greatly appreciate all the enthusiasm last time, but it gets to a point where it gets a little unwieldy, unwieldy. So, makes it, you have to, if you only got 12 people, everyone gets like half a question, so it makes it kind of challenging to, you know, follow up on questions and different things. So, I think a smaller targeted technical group would be ideal.
Would you like to make that motion? So, we'll second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a fire chief in mind?
We have a couple options.
Have you reached out, or...
Not yet.
Old business, wastewater treatment plant operations contract with WSO Plus.
So, we had tabled this at the last meeting. I did confirm, so the main question was if we wanted to terminate the contract earlier, was that an option? I didn't have all the contract terms here, which I did include in here in the pack at this time, and it does talk about for no cause termination, the owner may terminate at any time with 30 days' notice. So, I think that covers the concern. I also think, I had a discussion with Joe and also Bill about the, kind of the timeline, best case scenario realistically, if everything goes great with our employees that are working on getting licensed, we're probably five years away. So, I don't think that should be an issue in this term anyway, but we do have the option of something great, you know, we're able to, we're coming to pass. We do have the option to get out sooner if we need to.
Very good.
They've been very accommodating, and very accommodating, good to work with.
Well, having an understanding, which I didn't have last time, of the certifications needed, the timing that's required to get the advanced certification, there's no way that we could do less than three years.
Right.
And protect the town. You want a motion?
Yes, please.
Make the motion that we authorize town administrator to sign the operations contract with WSO Plus?
For the current ending, December 31, 2026?
Yes, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
2024 budget.
So, the main kind of outstanding discussion item was about the agencies. We talked about funding those in separate warrant articles. I gave, just to give you kind of, just give you a little snapshot of what, what some of the calculations are looking like when we get to the budget hearing, so you're not totally taken off guard. We're looking at a similar increase to appropriation as we had last year. Joe was able to, we were able to cut a little bit more out of the paving lines, saying thanks to some of those additional one-time state funds, we're still budgeting more than last year, so it's not like we're cutting back and not continuing to get more work done, but we're able to cut that back a little bit more. But I know you talked about having the agencies funded at their full request amount, which would be another $25,000. I just really think, based on the increases we're already looking at, it's not a huge amount in the total scheme of things, but it is just one more, one more increase. Maybe if you wanted to have the additional funding be in a separate article and keep them as they have been in the, in the operating budget, but I think, I think you're running the risk by going with the higher amount, that A, it's going to get approved, and then of course I would raise some concerns about why maybe that not, might not be something you want to do in terms of breaking those out. Again, I do know other towns do it. I do think it's more common in town meeting towns versus SB2 towns. So, that's my, that's my kind of pitch, that you'll keep them, at least the ones that you have been funding at the amounts you've been funding in the budget, and that if you'd like to maybe have the additional funding or the new ones in a warrant article, maybe do it that way.
I know my, my concern was the large increase in request from some of the agencies. I think anybody under $5,000 really, I don't see an issue with them, but when we're getting up over $20,000, I think, I think, I think it's important for, for members of the town to, to know what the amount is that's being requested and the amount that they're funding, whether it's, whether they agree to or disagree, I think it's only fair that they understand if we put it in the budget, then I think we go in with what we funded last year, because those are pretty sizable increases. Not to say they're not justifiable.
Right.
But they're pretty, pretty substantial. And of course, I did, I did say that, I've forgotten which one, the, the kids one, that they were asking for 1,500, and I did blurt out, why don't you ask for 2,000, just because it just seems like that's a miniscule amount for the children, but...
I think Slid ruled that comment out of order, if I remember.
He did, yeah, okay, good. Okay, so I could have, I could have just kept quiet on that then, couldn't I? So, anyway, but I do think that the larger ones, I guess, maybe if we discuss them individually, I, I just would like it to be discussed, so people know what, that A, we're being asked for, and B, we are contributing.
I think by breaking them out, you run the risk that that's the only thing we discuss.
Right.
You know, we'll spend an hour, each one of them will get up and give a 10-minute presentation about the good work they do do, but, yeah, I think I can, how about I try to work it into the, work it into the PowerPoint?
And leave it off a warrant article?
Yeah.
I did, at the time, didn't know how many warrant articles we were going to have in either, right, the cap. Boy, the planning board's been hard at work.
They've been planning their hearts out.
Oh, my God. I think with some contributions from the public, and, and they make sense, I just, there's a lot there.
Correct. So, keep that, keep in the budget at the amounts previously funded, and then, I mean, they can always make their pitch at either the budget hearing or deliver for the increase, so that keeps the door open, and that will have the discussion that you're looking for.
Yeah. Be fine with that.
Good, thank you.
Anything else on that?
On the budget?
Budget, bond hearing, warrant.
I think warrant related, I think members of the Preservation Society and/or Grange Hall Committee were here to maybe discuss something.
We've got one minute to collect it. So, you know, we went to the big grant in Brookout, so myself, Norm, and the, and the two committees kind of got together and thought about what we, what does the building actually, actually need currently? And so, one of the things that happened this year, they recognized during the music fest, unfortunately, was the roof started physically leaking where we could see it. I think everybody pretty much understands that it doesn't matter where you live, but in New England in particular, if the building starts to get wet, the building will die pretty darn quickly, can't be getting wet. So, I was talking to Norm about, well, maybe patch the roof, and, and I'm looking at the roof, and we all know that the superstructure's been failing for a long time, that's, that hasn't gotten any better, and I'm afraid if somebody were to try to get up on the roof and fix it, they'd almost do as much damage or more damage just by actually standing on it, because the shingles are in such poor condition, especially on the backside of the structure where it appears to be leaking. So, I went through and tried to figure out roughly how much putting a roof on that building would be, and keeping in mind that when I talk about putting a roof on that building, we're talking about doing like we did on Town Hall, and that's all of it. The shingles, the sheeting, the rafters, everything, right down to the top plates, put on trusses, new sheeting, new roofing, preferably metal, I always try to go metal. And the basic number, which has not been verified by, by potential vendors, there's a very big disclaimer on this, I came up with around $80,000. I looked at it again today to see how I felt about the number, because it seemed kind of reasonable, and numbers these days aren't reasonable, so we'd have to verify that, but I think that's where we are with that. The windows ended physically falling out of the building, there's just nowhere around that. We have 25 windows that need to be replaced, I put $1,500 onto those, I'm having a hard time getting anybody to actually look at them, between everybody being busy, the companies that I talked to before, half of them no longer in business, unless you have money in hand, everybody, just not talking to people. And then last but not least, there's an e-drain in the back that the water continues to infiltrate the basement at a rate, and it needs a drain, it's, it's always needed a drain, and I put in a number that would allow us to hire subcontract that we had, DPW couldn't get it, volunteers couldn't get it, we can sub it out and get it. You add all that together, and you're looking at around $125,000. And I kind of want to approach the select board with this, because in conversations with them, the budget hearing's coming in, they're going to want to talk about this as a budget hearing, knowing you guys have a little bit of a heads up on what we're thinking. The goal is, these three items, I'm sure you recognize, are all about keeping the building drier, trying to keep it dry. It seems more than once that we've been at a inflection point with this structure, and we're here again because it's getting wet, and it's going to start to suffer some real damage. And that's really kind of, kind of where we're at with that. So, these are the basic numbers that we came up with. I'll leave it up for the committee and the rest of them to kind of make their case and the rest of that, but, you know, like I said, I work with them to try to come up with a number to get the voters ultimately, which is an idea of what they'd be getting for their money without spending, A, an ordinary amount of time, and B, again, not being able to get a lot of help from potential vendors on this thing. Nobody's, and it's just really hard.
Is the metal roof anticipated standing scene?
Yeah.
Can you, can you provide specs on the windows, what, what you're thinking?
They would be in kind, they would be, they would look, I mean, they would, they would be, I mean, there are these windows right here, so it would be the same, it wouldn't be double paned, it wouldn't be energy efficient, it would be maintaining the historic. So, the ones that could be repaired, renovated, saved, the glass certainly want to save the wavy glass, they'd be reusing that glass, they may be making them out of whole cloth because they're in such poor condition, honestly. But the, the expectation is that everything would be replaced as it is now, so it looks now, maintain historic preservation and the potential money that goes with that.
And what are the restrictions that come along with that as well?
I'm going to, I'm going to leave that more to these guys, what that is, is, but, but my experience is, is the restriction is, you've got to maintain it's like we did here, you've got to keep everything as best you can, the way it was, using what was here. And you can't, you can't like faux it up, you can't put in like a brand new, top-of-the-line double hung that looks like that, they don't want that. They want that, and they want something completely different, because it had to be completely different. We went through that, we went through like the railings and railing upstairs and a bunch of other different things. It's been, what we've dealt with in the past with this building anyway, was don't faux it, don't try to make it look old, like, don't go for that. So, it's either rich or old, or new, and they're not going to, they're not going to want windows that are brand new. They're not going to want that.
Who, who is they?
The overseers of the historical stuff, the historical money and the rest of that stuff, and, and that. I mean, it's, whenever you enter, it's always, it's always a risky game to enter a building into historical preservation, because you've chosen your path with historical preservation. And that's always the danger of it, when you get that in there. I mean, it's, I know in my own time as a selectman, that we had a building in Valles Pool, I don't even remember Valles Pool, but it's in this sort of little recreation area, and they got it, you know, on the registry, and everybody was excited about it, but it really held us back in making a lot of the changes that that building needed, for safety and nothing else. It was tough.
In this building at least, the restrictions are from the Hampshire Elche, because they were a large fundraiser. So, I think what Mike's talking about is, you know, trying to keep their standards in mind, even though that they haven't necessarily, well, they funded the, the study that was conducted, they helped with the architectural study, but it doesn't have any restrictions on it from them currently, but if you went down that path looking for funding, and you did a bunch of stuff that they're not going to like, you're probably not going to have a skill shot about it.
So, are we on that path and we can't get off it?
Well, you can always get off it, I mean, it's, it's kind of a different discussion that I'm not, I couldn't, I couldn't bring anything to that discussion tonight that would be that helpful, it'll be assumptions conjecture, you know, of rooms looks like. We could talk about what that would look like and what that would free you up on, but I have to, we'd have to do some, some map on that, and we'd have to make a lot of phone calls to try to figure out what that looks like.
It just seems from a practical standpoint that it would be best to look at comparable windows that are double paned or triple paned, since the, if, if the building is ultimately restored, it's essentially going to be refilled, and with obviously modern insulation materials and, and all that goes with it, maybe some furring to, to get the depth in the walls needed to, to provide adequate insulation. So, why wouldn't we do, what would be the drawback to doing two or three paned windows that are, in this case, two over twos or six over sixes?
Yeah, I, I, again, I'd have to really, I'd have to make some phone calls and do some research to try to, to answer that question properly, I, I don't have enough knowledge right now, it would be irresponsible.
From, from a funding standpoint, we, we know that if we go down the path, there's certain funding mechanisms that are available that wouldn't be available if, if we, if we followed the new window.
Yeah, I mean, that's always, it's always a weird thing, right? Because, yes, there's definitely some funding that probably wouldn't be available, does that mean that we wouldn't be eligible for other funding, you know? I, I don't, I honestly don't know where, where they are right now. They've spent a lot of time, a lot of energy looking at funding, different funding sources, they have a much better grip on it, they've met with the people, and we've been, we've been able to answer those questions if, if able, but again, we really want to, how about this? That money would take care of proper windows as well, $1,500 a hall, which is basically what I figured, it would take care of almost any window. So, we, right now, what we're really, what I'm really trying to present is a financial placeholder more than a solution for what we're actually going to do.
Has that been the conundrum right from the get-go? What are we going to do?
Yes.
What's the solution?
I'm familiar with that.
What's the use? That's always been the conundrum, but everybody, but one of the uses, I think my colleague has brought up is additional town hall space for different departments, and, and that's really what led me to the question with regard to windows, because we know what it's like to, to have people in the current town hall with inefficiencies with the windows that are there, and what we tried to do to make it relatively comfortable, knowing that we can, but doing the best we can.
Right.
So, if, if the, if one of the uses of that building is an annex for town hall, then we're going to have the same, same situation.
Well, it's just, I mean, you know, all of that aside, I mean, just operational costs are always the real thing, right? I mean, getting it done and getting it going, getting every other day is one thing, but then, you know, you're only going to be trying to keep it as efficient as possible for the future generations, so I'm hearing you there. Like I said, they, they, the, the, again, they're here, you can talk about it, much more eloquent than I can, and they've worked much harder on it than I certainly have, but I got to tell you, that whole coffee thing, it was, it was really, it was pretty cool to be in town hall, look across there and see 13, 14, 15 cars, and all the people were in there, and then some of those people, when they got done, they'd come over and they'd register the car, or the car, and they were talking about it. And it was, it was a group of folks getting together, a collective group of folks together that wouldn't necessarily normally get together and sharing ideas and talking about stuff, and I just, that's a pretty good thing to have today. It's a pretty awesome thing to have, so I, I thought it was pretty cool. I was really glad to see it was, as successful as it was, it definitely showed that there's a, a desire for that. The community's still there, and they still get together, and that's awesome.
Do you foresee any difficulties with the metal roof and the non-heated building when the snow finally does come off?
Well, the snow coming off is a big one. Definitely going to want to have the snow stops over the doorways and the rest of that stuff. Town Hall, it's worked out pretty darn well, I've been here, and I've been happy with how it's worked in Town Hall, and I just, I always want to put, I always want to put on there what's going to be in the long-term best interest of the public. You know, I mean, for me, the best roof would be slate, but we're not going to afford slate, because they clearly last a long, because dollar-to-dollar, it's going to beat it, but metal's the next best thing.
It's just the way that we're, the driveway is out there. The whole driveway is going to be...
No, those lighthouse, those lighthouse bushes are going to suffer, but again, I mean, that, that roof on there isn't that old, it's only about a 20-year-old roof, and I checked with Richard Scaramelli, they would very quick figure out finding those or any of that stuff, but Richard knew right when, when it was done, and he did it, the rest of it. And I don't have a, we could definitely go shingles, but again, it's a great placeholder for nothing else, right? We've got a placeholder, and we've got to give, get in, and we get in, and we go for something a little more affordable this time around, but the roof will certainly be better and structurally competent, and price it with the idea of an added trust, so that we have to put mechanical equipment in it, we can, a lot easier than we would otherwise. Of course, you have to pitch the same for the same reasons, but you should still be able to work inside it.
You guys got anything?
I just would say this, Norm, to be honest with you, on the Town of Bayberry community and under SPS, the window issue, just to be more clear on that, we had the Winchester Preservation Society come out and actually analyze and look at the windows, and kind of get an idea of whether they were worth restoring, they felt that it was fairly restorable, and that it would add to the features of the building to restore the windows. It would also, as far as grants go, we can, CDFA, which we did not get the first round, we're a candidate in the second round, and the 1772 grant, and also the boost plate grant are all possibilities for funding for things like the windows and other things at the building, so this could change, and we could get a grant at some point that would allow funds to be used for something else, but the whole idea behind this is, when Petrovic did the study, at that time, he said it was a million-dollar restoration, and you know, of course, the only way we would get a million-dollar restoration would be some scheduled plan, and we have not been able to qualify it for that. One of the biggest reasons is that we don't have existing programs like some of the hub have, have. A lot of the money is going to larger communities or hub communities that serve a wider range, but if we could just do these things that actually save the building, we can continue to use it and do fundraising like the Bluegrass Festival is a fundraiser, and Coffee Connections is an activity, because we were trying to establish activity, so if a grant writers looked at that, they would say, you know, okay, you are trying to have programming, and we have a lot more ideas for program. So, I would just say that, you know... So I'd just say that, uh, you know, I, I think it's fluid, it could, things could change and we have to stay in touch with it, but we're satisfied with going, this is a great way to go because it saves the building and allows us to continue using it, even though it's not a full restoration. So, you know, I think it's a win.
And, and you have money available to do painting and other cosmetics?
We have a small amount of money, and I know that in the past that, uh, the Preservation Society has wanted to make contributions toward this restoration, but the exact amount, I'm not sure a lot of that depends on how the Bluegrass Festival goes, you know, going forward, but there is some funding that would be available for things like painting, right? We have actually had a donor that wants to donate approximately ten thousand toward painting if things move forward, but they don't want to donate the money if they don't think the project's going to move forward.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's fair.
Yeah.
Thanks, Norm.
You're welcome.
Any other further? Budget hearing. Delivery session.
Well, it's really at least initially a budget hearing item because it's not on the warrant currently, so unless, um, has to be discussed at the budget hearing and then it could be added in by the select board, but there's not, you can change amounts of delivery, but you can't add a purpose, so it needs to be, that's why it at least needs to be discussed if it's going to be approved, needs to be discussed at the budget hearing. Similar, slightly different thing, I see slide has the color pictures there, we've got the updated, um, updated, uh, kind of architectural, just little pretty pictures to go with the fire station, um, design, and then an updated budget and site plan are also in there. So to, total full cost, we're looking at five million to a little above, um, but I think we can cover the little above, yeah, I don't know. Yeah. So, it's broken down, you can see the one, the one pager version. So, thirty-three percent smaller and twenty-five percent more expensive. What was that initial scheme you had, Norm? Five point two million?
Thirty-six, Mike. How much smaller is it than the original version?
The original, original, I don't know, probably half.
For the same amount. Good. Administrative update?
Couple things, I included in here, or in your, I think again, slide, maybe you have those examples. Town clerk spoke to me today about her inability to reach the moderator. She's tried through several avenues, as have I. I know Bill, you reached out to him about the upcoming training, we're not able to reach him. As we talked about in the last meeting, the presidential primary is coming and it's going to be a sizable effort, especially to deal with the write-ins.
Three people of the four. So we're at five.
But a lot of times, we have previously had people who say they're interested, I think even Jay, you mentioned that you had, said you were interested before and for some reason, we're not selected, so, don't know if you want to hold, sign this and hold off on it, if you think it's too much, but I just, I think we need to, or, it's up to you, but if I were you, I would want to clearly...
Are you going to mail this or publish it or something?
What do you think the best, uh, best avenue is?
Publish it.
Sure.
Chief Joe?
Yeah.
You live in this neighborhood, right?
I do. My extension? Yeah.
Let's see if it's the East Swansea post office?
Yeah, well, we used to back in the day, that was pretty cool, actually.
Yeah, a couple other things, I wanted to give a lot of credit to Pam Fortner, our health officer, we, uh, after much effort from her, we've received what's called Prime Status with Primex, which gives us a two-point-five percent discount on our property and liability insurance.
Nice.
So she had to really stick with it, but, um, next step will be worker stomp, but I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. I think Primex will actually come out and do a little, uh, dog and pony kind of congratulatory event at one of your meetings, but, um, just wanted to let you know and, like I said, recognize her effort.
Based, based on the reactions that she was getting from Primex, and I met with Pam pretty, I did nothing but meet with Pam, by the way, I was absolutely right, she did an amazing job. We may be one of the only people to get, that are getting this or work that hard to try to get or even care to try to get it, because the answers were almost nonexistent and maybe she could get them, they would change it. She really almost did their work too, just her work, it was theirs, they would not, they're good partners in general.
In a lot of ways.
In a lot of ways, wonderful, but? She really went above and down, she worked at KAL for a year and a half.
It's been a while, yeah.
It was no small matter, absolutely.
So this is like the risk management committee and some of that?
Yeah, it's part of that, yes, part of that. Policies, some of which the board's adopted over the last few years, so it's, yeah, it's a kind of a culmination of a lot of different things, but yes, it does have to do with the JLMC. And then the, uh, final item I wanted to mention, I have kind of a draft press release, more like a website posting, but I just put it in my normal format, but, um, may or may not have heard that Eversource is looking at lower rates this winter, which was not expected.
Were the counties paying that?
What's that?
Did you hear, the county, community power payment?
I did, but these numbers go in one ear and out the other, so you'll have to run.
Eight and a half.
Eight and a half. So...
Or eight and a half, so.
Basically for the folks that are sitting here watching, watching us read, um, it's just a little notice, basically saying that Eversource's rates are, um, are lowering in February, it has the quoted amounts. Swansea's plan's default rate is about, uh, three, yeah, about three cents above what their new rate is going to be. That just outlines people's options. You can opt out, you can stay with our plan. We never said the plan was going to be the cheapest forever, it's been cheaper since , uh, people enrolled, uh, provides consistent rates, so if you jump out, you might then, you know, get hit with the increase, but, uh, we just thought it was important, we had a meeting with the other communities involved in our purchase group and the suppliers and felt it was important to just be, again, you know, Mark mentioned transparency earlier, just be transparent that, yes, the rate's changing, this is what it means, uh, and these are your options, so.
And the new rate's about what?
The new Eversource rate is going to be eight point two-nine.
A little competition, that's, this is far prior from the twenty-eight, what is it, twenty-two?
Right, and this, this kind of a decrease in the winter is something we've really never seen before. We have a, our energy guy has a number of, you know, speculations, warmer weather, a lot of, uh, natural gas and some different, different items, but certainly was not predicted. And I do think, you know, you mentioned that, I do think the community power aspect is a part of it, they kind of shrugged it off and said, I don't know, it's just, you know, larger factors, but...
So how long's Eversource's, are they in a six-month cycle?
They are. So they go out to bid.
Yeah.
Six months to a day, and they just got a good day, I think is part of it too.
Because Swansea's plan's good, it'll be signed up twenty twenty-five.
Right.
Two and a half years?
Right, correct. So if you peruse that and then you get an edit and you want to send it over, that'd be great, but, um, I just wanted you to be there.
I think with the, with the letter to Bruce, we, we should indicate that we've engaged five people as counters, so that the, the five people who have offered to serve will understand and know that they'll be welcome at seven o'clock. So, do we have the authority to, to do that?
Let's just, I, I'm not, uh...
We, we don't have a lot of time.
No, I know. No, I'm just saying, I don't know, I don't know the finer points of election law authority because I don't really have a role in elections, so I don't know for sure, but if we tell them to be there, I mean, we, we pay the employees, so. Happy, happy to word it however, however the board wants.
Well, I, I, I think it just need, we, we need, this doesn't require a response. So, I think we need to, i- i- I didn't realize there was this degree of concern, I didn't know that, that how many people have been trying to reach him, so maybe there's some health issues, maybe there's something else going on that we're, we're not aware of.
Certainly possible.
But we, we certainly have something coming up in three weeks that we, we need to be prepared for.
Right.
So, I bet he's not signed up for the moderator's workshop, but if he is, then I'll see him there.
When is that, Friday or Saturday?
Saturday.
The training that came out on email is available anytime, right? It's recorded.
Believe you have to sign up.
You have to sign up and pay for it.
Yeah. So you know someone who's signed up that could share it with them, probably.
But they could still take it anytime between now and the election.
Well, there's a bunch of training sessions that are available.
Right, just webinar based.
If you have suggested, like I said, I'm happy to, I'm trying to, trying to walk that balance, so, you know, I don't, I don't think it's going to be well-received even, even in that format, so I'm trying to balance the, get the attention, but not do more damage than...
I'll go knock on the door.
There you go. I saw Keane is, uh, using tablets instead of hand-printed supervisors and checklists so that you don't have to go be the person, the correspondence with your last name, you can go to any open clerk and register, you know?
Good.
Check in. That would certainly help us in November. Instead of everybody, then you get to be cognit...
We do do that.
All right, you okay with that? I'll go knock on the door.
Yeah.
All right, so why don't we just hold this? Uh, we'll see, try to make contact.
Okay. Thank you. And then, uh, finally, just wanted to do a plug, it's been kind of out there, it was in Swansea uncovered, um, just alluded to, but we're having the first kind of brainstorming session for Brown Field tomorrow night at six here, um, with Stevens and Associates to kind of, this is the initial session where people talk about some of their priorities, what they'd like to see happen, and we'll kind of take those ideas, work with the consultants and then come back with a few different site plans, so I think we're pretty excited about the potential of, uh, kind of getting Brown Field back to its former glory, so.
Great.
When is that?
Tomorrow night at six.
Could we reuse theouthouse design for purchase in park over here?
Probably.
A little modification.
Yeah, probably, or something similar, depending on if we want to try to have a cook shack or something in it, but yeah, something similar.
Anything else, any non-partners?
Nope.
For a bite of the apple? So moved. Favor? Thank you.